Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju endio wachea kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, folks, we will officially call this meeting to order. Mr Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we have quorum.
Okay, we have nothing under Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting, so we will move to the approval of the addits. We have the addition of two delegations plus an additional four, and then we also have a number of communications. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by Councillor Neil. Okay, so I have a point of order. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, Worship. I'm just wondering if we're going to be able to vote on each item separately as you go through, or are you looking to approve all addits at one time?
So, good question. So there are essentially, this is a two-step process. So step number one would be to approve the addits, and then you can see on the addits that for any of the delegations after the number three, where our procedural bylaw requires to be waived, we have to do separate votes for every delegation after that. So we'll do those votes once we get through the delegations. Okay, so I have a mover, I forget who the mover was for the addits. Councillor Neil, thank you very much. Is there a seconder for the addits? Someone second the addits? Seconded by Councillor Hill, thank you. Okay, we will call the vote then. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, so now we will move on. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we have no presentations this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Chappell, point of order. Councillor Chappell, we're just, just need you off mute, and then, any point of order, go ahead.
Yes, I have a conflict that I need to announce.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Simon Chappell of the City of Kingston hereby declare a possible conflict of interest in the matter of new motion number one. The Ontario Proel Board of which the Human Rights Tribunal of Ontario is also a constituent tribunal, made it to comment publicly on matters which may find its way before one of the constituent tribunals for consideration, or items currently being debated at higher levels of government which reside outside the scope of municipal jurisdiction.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any other disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, then we will move to delegations. So what we have now on our agenda are three delegations, which we will move through, then we will do votes for, well actually, maybe we'll do it right now. So just so we're clear on what the list of delegations are. So we have three delegations that have been added, and then we have four motions that have been put forward to add additional delegations. So we need to do separate votes for each of them. So number four, moved by Councillor Doherty, seconded by Councillor Hill, that clauses 11.3 and 11.4 of the City of Kingston procedural bylaw, as amended, be waived in order to allow Keely Gabriel and Sheila Roway to speak to new motion number one with respect to Bill C6 and amend, an act to amend the Criminal Code. We will call the vote. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Number five, moved by Councillor Doherty, seconded by Councillor Hill, that clauses 11.3 and 11.4 of the City of Kingston procedural bylaw, as amended, be waived in order to allow Ben Rogers to speak to new motion number one, again with respect to Bill C6 and act to amend the Criminal Code. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Number six, moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Hutchison, that clauses 11.3 and 11.4 of the City of Kingston procedural bylaw 2010-1, as amended, be waived in order to allow Ashley Perna to speak to new motion number one with respect to Bill C6 and act to amend the Criminal Code. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. And number seven, moved by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, seconded by Councillor, yes, point of order. Councillor Holland.
Just note that Councillor Chappell has declared conflict and is voting on delegations on this motion.
So, so what I will do is I will take that, it's friendly advice offered from one councillor to another, but yes, generally speaking, the practice is best not to vote on delegations that are speaking to the issue of declared conflict. Okay, number seven, moved by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, seconded by Councillor Ossanik, that clauses 11.3 and 11.4 of the City of Kingston procedural bylaw, as amended, be waived in order to allow Derek Sloan, MP Hastings, Lennox and Addington to speak to new motion number one with respect to Bill C6 and act to amend the Criminal Code. We'll call the vote. All those in favour? Opposed? Okay, and that, that loses. It requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Okay, that is the end of our delegation list, so that leaves us with six delegations. So first up, we will invite Seth Perry, who will appear before council to speak to new motion number one with respect to Bill C6, an act to amend the Criminal Code conversion therapy. Just a reminder to Mr Perry and all our delegations that you have five minutes, I will time it, and then we will open it up for questions from council. So, Mr Perry, if you are on the line, you have the floor. We're just, just having a little, here, with your audio, Mr Perry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Mayor Patterson, councillors, I am Pastor Seth Perry of St Mark's Lutheran Church at 263 Victoria Street at the corner of Victoria and Earl. I'm the pastor of a fully affirming church. Being an affirming congregation means that our church is a place where LGBTQ plus bodies, identities and experiences are celebrated, defended and declared as sacred. As Christians, we believe that the gender identity, gender expression, romantic attraction and sex of LGBTQ plus folks is how they were lovingly created by God. The act of forcibly changing a person's gender or sexual identity through conversion therapy is sinful, dangerous and abusive. So to those who say that you cannot be both an LGBTQ plus individual and Christian, we proclaim that Jesus taught us the greatest commandment, love. And love is not simply tolerance. Christians are called not only to tolerate our LGBTQ plus neighbours, Jesus showed us what love is when He dwelled with all people. And Jesus dwelled with the excluded and the outcast, and we must defend and journey with our excluded and outcast and abused LGBTQ plus neighbours. To those who say that you cannot be a Christian and an LGBTQ plus person, we proclaim that archaic laws from the Old Testament that condemned LGBTQ plus lives, experiences and bodies and identities are abhorrent and unjust. The Bible has been written and rewritten and editorialised for ages by a patriarchal society that excluded LGBTQ plus folks. Christians must preach with history in mind. If any preaching demonises LGBTQ plus folks, it is an abusive sermon preached in the wrong millennium. These words I speak are not that of an outlier. I could be one of many faith leaders in this city that affirm LGBTQ plus lives, bodies, identities and experiences. However, there is a need for our city to take a stand against conversion therapy. Since July of 2020, I've been contacted separately by four Christian LGBTQ plus citizens of Kingston that do not feel included or affirmed in the churches that they worship in. There is a human cost, and some might say that this is a political issue and it infringes on their rights to gather as a church. Well, a faith organisation that argues against the ban on conversion therapy on the grounds that they have the right to religious freedom is fighting for their right to harm a person. So let's think about that for a moment. Fighting for their right to harm a person and using the Bible or God for the reason for doing so. So for that reason, honourable councillors and Mayor Patterson, I implore you all to raise your hand tonight in favour of this motion. And when this motion passes, and when you do this, know that this is not just political posturing. Instead, I see it as all of you stepping forward with both feet in with a commitment to provide spaces and services for LGBTQ plus folks who come forward with cases of abuse. This is not merely a rubber stamp, this is a commitment to justice and equality. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr Perry. Are there any questions from council?
Thank you, Mr Perry, for your words, they were very powerful, actually. I just wonder if you could just name, you mentioned that there are quite a few, actually, churches in our community where people can, can go to, to speak about their experiences, but also for their faith. And, and I just wonder if you could just mention a few. I believe Sydenham Street United Church wrote a letter to council as well, but I wonder if you could just mention a few others.
And numerous other clergy stepped forward and spoke out against the global ban on conversion therapy that was called for as well, not only Christian leaders, but it was signed for by some folks over at St James Anglican clergy there, that are right there on Queen's campus. And after I appeared on Global News, I had a long discussion with our, with a local rabbi from a synagogue as well, Beth Israel synagogue. This definitely crosses faith boundaries, so the need is there. However, I must say, there are many individuals that belong to congregations who are either tied to their congregation's will not to step into complete acceptance of LGBTQ plus individuals, or who are bound by their greater national denominations, resistance to step into complete acceptance of LGBTQ plus individuals, that they can't either speak out at their own congregation on issues like this, because they would either feel outcast or ostracized, that have spoken to me individually in support, but they cannot do, do so in a public forum in their own churches. And those are churches in this city that have not yet grown to complete affirmation and acceptance of LGBTQ plus lives.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr Perry.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to our next delegation. Number two, Maven Armstrong will appear before council to speak to clause three of report number seventeen received from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee with respect to the turtle crossing mitigation strategy for Princess Street at Collins Creek. Just looking, there we go. Ms Armstrong, welcome. You, you have the floor, you have five minutes, and then we will open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Audio is all right? Everybody can hear? Perfect. I would like to thank Kingston City Council providing this opportunity to address a crucial environmental issue of the mitigation of the Westbrook wetland. It's been a long time coming, and I am very grateful that its time has arrived. When I initiated the relaunch of Turtles Kingston four years ago, the primary goal was the mitigation of the Westbrook wetland. Travelling that road on a daily basis, I was abhorred by the slaughter that I witnessed there. The carnage was in juxtaposition to the surrounding beauty of the wetland. In 2019, after having spent more than forty hours on that stretch of road protecting the myriad of turtles that were nesting there, the realisation of just how grave the situation really was washed over me. We had already reported twenty-nine road mortalities and estimated that if we had not been present, the forty-three turtles that we helped safely cross the road would not have survived and would have brought the total of road mortality to seventy-two turtles. 2020 was not any different. We spent thirty-nine straight days monitoring the turtles and did not lose one adult reproducing female turtle on our watch. We helped more than a dozen of the ninety-nine nesting turtles safely cross the road, and that's ninety-nine that we witnessed. We know that there was far more coming out in the wee hours of the morning. It is easy to see why the Westbrook wetland is Kingston's number-one road mortality hotspot. A local excavation company stated that there's an estimated eleven thousand cars and heavy construction vehicles that use that road on a daily basis. Considering the fact that it takes an average of nine minutes for a turtle to cross a two-lane road, their chances for survival is virtually nonexistent. It takes sixty years to replace just one adult reproducing turtle. When you do the math, you come to the realisation that it would be well over four thousand years for those turtles had they all succumbed to road mortality to replace themselves. The Westbrook wetland colony of turtles would not survive such a devastating loss to their populations. It would collapse. You can easily see why turtles are the most endangered vertebrate species on the planet and why they are literally on the road to their extinction. Road mortality and habitat loss are the principal reasons for the decline in their populations. They just can't keep up. The wetlands are very special and unique places. They are referred to as the kidneys of the earth. As surface water flows through the wetland, plants absorb the nutrients such as carbon and phosphorus. When the plant dies, the nutrients in the plant matter are stored in the sediments. Similar to our kidneys, wetlands allow cleaner water to be passed along to the rest of the ecosystem while sequestering vast amounts of carbon, making them essential components in meeting the challenge of climate change. Only 2.7% of the world's water is a fresh water source. Twenty percent of that is found here in Ontario. We already have massive populations on this planet migrating in the search for fresh water sources. Water shortages are now affecting more than three billion people around this world. The amount of fresh water available to each person has plunged by twenty percent just over the last two decades. Kingston experienced a level-two drought this past summer. Three other provinces experienced water shortage this past year, and Nova Scotia is still experiencing a water shortage. Wetlands are the most endangered of all ecosystems. They are also our most valuable. Less than ten percent of our original wetlands remain in southern Ontario. As they vanish, so does the life within them. Turtles are referred to as the janitors of the wetlands. They play an essential role in keeping our fresh water sources clean, because they consume such vast amounts of bacteria-producing carrion, decaying flesh and decaying vegetation. Remove them, and the wetlands will implode with bacteria. The only thing we need to provide them for this humble, essential service is their survival. I heartfully commend the city for this initiative to protect the world's most imperiled species. I would like to thank, beg your pardon?
Sorry, I was just letting you, you have thirty seconds left.
Thank you. I would like to thank the thousands of people that have supported this initiative, particularly councillors Lisa Ossanik, Simon Chappell and Rob Kylie. In addition, Queen's Biology student Adriana Neisted for her petition with its more than twelve hundred signatures, and the four thousand supporting community members of Turtles Kingston that emailed their letters of support for this initiative. There is great strength when we come together from a place of integrity. There is great strength in being respectful, and even greater strength in the preservation and protection of what appears to be so resilient, but is in actuality so delicate and irreplaceable.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
One last.
You know what? Just because I need to be fair, I do try to hold that fast. However, there's an opportunity for questions, so I'm sure if there's a question from council, I can add any last points in there. So, so at this point, I'll turn it over to council. Are there any questions? Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I thank you very much, Ms Armstrong, for your delegation tonight and for all the work you've done with Turtles Kingston. Can you just talk briefly about, like, from a volunteer basis, how difficult it is to do the monitoring to, you know, over the past years? Like, I think you've been doing this for four years in a row, and there's liabilities concern, isn't there? If, if we don't do fencing and just use volunteers, I believe there's liability concerns, and that's why fencing is really the only option. Is that true?
That is absolutely true. I mean, we can't do a call to action. We, as Turtles Kingston, we cannot call people out on the road to volunteer because of the fact, they can sign a waiver which exempts them. But the problem in, for example, if they went to pick up a turtle and were startled and jumped back and created a head-on collision, well, that liability would, would fall on us as the people who scheduled them to be there to assist us. If people show up of their own volition and volunteer, that's fine, but we can't count on people for that. So the road monitoring this year, which I know that you yourself and Simon Chappell can attest to, it's a gruesome task. We were out there at five o'clock in the morning till nine-thirty, and then again in the evening from five-thirty till sometimes ten at night. So it's grueling. We were out there for thirty-nine straight days this year, we did not lose one adult turtle, and we were out there for more than forty hours the, the year before. It was a completely different nesting season the year before. This year, there was a drought, so the behaviour of the turtles was completely different than the year before and the year before that, when there was actually flood. So it's a massive concern. It's the mitigation around the world, the installation of exclusion fencing is the number-one response to road mortality. They're already losing huge numbers because of habitat loss. That's the major reason for the decline in their populations. So road mortality, we do have control over habitat loss, we do. Unfortunately, it's in a position of conflict development with environment. We do have control over what can happen with road mortality by the simple implementation of these mitigation measures. Exclusion fencing has been proven to be the number-one of assisting the survivability of this species, which is the most imperiled vertebrate species on the planet. They are on the road to extinction, but they keep our water clean. So this just isn't a turtle-hugging, tree-hugging event. This is essential. I mean, we've all seen what happened last year with the IPBES report with the decline in biodiversity. I mean, we're experiencing a pandemic that they're relating to that. So Kingston is in the middle of a provincially significant wetland, so it's in a perfect position to take this action, which would be a tremendous step forward in supporting not only turtles, but also climate change, because of the fact of the importance of the sequestration of carbon of the wetlands. So it just is the right thing to do, it's the right step to take. And then, of course, the poaching incident, it would have prevented that horrific experience that we had in August.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Ms Armstrong.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to our third delegation. Rick Peterson will appear before council to speak to clause three of report number seventeen received from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee with respect to the turtle crossing mitigation strategy for Princess Street at Collins Creek. Mr Peterson, if you are, there we go. Looking all the right buttons. You got it. Welcome, and you have the floor.
And thank you, Mr Mayor and the councillors, for this opportunity. I represent almost four thousand followers of Turtles Kingston, a Facebook community whose goal it is to inform citizens of the plight of turtles, that they are threatened and that their importance to our ecosystem is to keep our wetlands healthy, protect us all from floods, drought, as you heard Maven mention, help assure clean water and sequester vast amounts of carbon. Our focus has always been to mitigate with exclusion fencing, eco-passages and alternative nesting sites, Kingston's known turtle mortality hotspots, in particular, the Westbrook wetland Collins Creek area. And I'm not sure, you'll have to tell me if the slides are being presented, but that was for slide one. And we'll move right along to slide two then, if we can. Now, six years ago, the City of Kingston asked for and received data from McIntosh Perry that identified four hotspots. Highway two through the Westbrook wetland was the area of most concern. The report pointed out the need for exclusion fencing, eco-passages and alternative nesting sites, and in the past six years, only one of the four areas has been addressed, Princess Street at the Ambassador Hotel. Staying with this slide now, for the past three years, Turtles Kingston volunteers have monitored Highway two during turtle nesting season, May to October, and in that time, we've helped seventy-three turtles across the road safely and witnessed over two hundred nests. Sadly, we've also transported dozens of injured by vehicles or dead turtles to the many Kingston veterinarian clinics through our Turtle Trauma Transportation Programme to either Sandy Pines or to the Ontario Turtle Conservation Centre in Peterborough. Each sighting has been reported to the Adopt-A-Pon Turtle Tally with a photograph and with GPS location. Slide. This year, we were on the road again, we observed similar numbers, large groups of basking, painted and snapping turtles near the Collins Bay, or Collins Creek Bridge, rather, and watched many nest along Highway two between Collins Bay and Westbrook roads. A total of ninety-nine were observed, many of which would not have survived without our help. Slide. They are species at risk. Here's some of the math that Maven spoke about earlier. It takes about eighteen years for a turtle to reach sexual maturity. Less than one percent of their eggs survive to adulthood because of predation, and it takes sixty years to replace a female. Ten dead females is a setback of six hundred years, and with continued loss of habitat to developments and continued road mortality, turtle populations cannot catch up and will continue to dramatically decline. Slide. We've also observed increased traffic on Highway two. With new developments, there's not only more vehicular traffic, but an increase in cyclists and pedestrians. This raises concern for the safety of those citizens. A cyclist will have to go round a turtle, perhaps into traffic, or a pedestrian doesn't have much room to help. Increase in developments has brought increases in traffic, cyclists and pedestrians. Slide. Highway two is also a 401 emergency detour route. During our observations this year, it was activated six times. Snapping turtles crossing a nesting season and especially hatchlings crossing in the fall don't stand a chance when this happens. Slide. This year, the cooperation of the City of Kingston, we protected eighteen nests along Highway two. That's a small percentage of the overall nesting we observed. Nests bring other animals, though, to the roadside, like raccoons, foxes, skunks, and that we have observed as well, and this year, the devastating incident with the two-legged predator, the poacher. As you're likely aware, because of the extensive national media coverage, most but not all of our protected nests were poached. Wildlife trafficking is in a multi-billion-dollar industry, turtles are at the top of that list. The loss of over three hundred eggs was a major setback. Exclusion fencing, alternative nesting sites and eco-passengers, passages, rather, will address poaching and wildlife predations along Highway two. Slide. The City of Kingston has made significant progress to set precedent for other communities to follow, and we hope that continues. Changing Highway two through Westbrook wetland to a posted no-passing zone to protect wildlife, for example, and the Public Works Initiative under the leadership of Bill Lennon to reschedule all road maintenance activity, including making the wetland areas a no-spray zone during turtle season, has been a huge help, and the result, as you can see, is beautiful, especially for pollinators. All of these photographs were taken along Highway two. Slide.
Thirty seconds.
It's important to say again why this is so important, but we also want to congratulate the Ministry of Transport. As you can see, their contingent mitigation efforts along many of our region's roads, the latest, the 401 at Gardner's Road, continues to develop and they add to that programme. Slide. Important again to say why it's so important, all ten species of turtles and cats are classified as species at risk, and they are essential for the biodiversity that keeps our wetlands functioning. Slide. Highway two between Westbrook and Collins Bay Road runs through a significant wetland, provincially significant, and of course, it helps Kingston if we keep it healthy, meet their climate goals with the significant contribution.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Peterson. I'm going to just pause there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I'm going to just pause there. Appreciate the the presentation, just watching my clock here. And at this point, I will turn it over to any questions from council. Deputy Mayor Oshoff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I really appreciate that presentation. And it is probably the second time I've heard it, Mr. Peterson, and I hear you even more louder and clearer, so it really helps to hear it again. And thank you very much. Well, is there is there is the Association for the Turtles, is that Turtles Kingston, sorry, is that something that you guys receive funding for as well? Or also that you accept donations? Is that right?
No, it's philanthropic. It's been mostly coming from ourselves. It is a Facebook community. Any donations that have been made, we've turned over to Sandy Pines. There was a couple of donations made to help us with the bumper sticker campaign. I think it totaled to a thousand dollars, which is only a percentage, a small percentage of what it actually costs, but it's been very philanthropic. Maven has taken a lot of this on. I have. And and the rest, again, we happily send over to Sandy Pines.
I see. I just wondering if this, there's no initiative underway then that would support projects such as this then?
Not from us. Again, our our whole principal thing has been to get this mitigation done and to help keep the community aware of why this is so important.
All right. Was there anything else of really importance that you wanted to share at this time?
There were a couple of slides, just because of the getting things started at the beginning, that I might just want to add again, because I didn't get a chance to properly thank you all. But the mitigation of the exclusion fencing, the eco-passages and the alternative nesting sites protects not only them in the wetlands, but us too who benefit from it. It's essential to do it now. The survival of turtles and all that share the wetlands depends on it. Kingston was the first municipality to declare a climate emergency, and it has set important goals. And mitigating Highway two is going to move us forward there. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to address the council on behalf of the almost four thousand followers of Turtles Kingston.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. Counsel Ossenik.
Thank you, your worship and through you. Thanks very much for the presentation, Mr. Peterson. If council does approve this tonight, timing is everything. Do you want to describe how important the timing is to then get the fencing in in twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, if if it doesn't, you can see the trending that we showed in the last three years that we've been out monitoring. It means getting up at four thirty in the morning again and getting down at the wetland by five and being on the road and trying to help as many of them as we can. With the increase in traffic, which seems to be, now that we've got this Road A that has opened in the middle of that wetland, there's even more traffic that's going to be expected there now. There's another road for the turtles to wander across. And so if this doesn't all fall together, we just keep bringing more vehicles to the road, more problems, more pedestrians, more cyclists, more people coming, not only the turtles in harm's way, but I fear also the people that are using that narrow stretch of highway.
And three, your worship, just the second question is, and month that this fencing has to go up, what about the month? When does this need to be completed, you know, like, that you don't have to wake up at four in the morning?
The middle of May, toward the end of May is when it starts. And then it's it's pretty much, it's it's rock and roll from that point into about the midpoint of summer, a little bit of a break, although not much before the hatchlings all start coming out toward the fall again, toward the end of September. So it's it's busy pretty much right through the summer as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Counsel Chappelle.
Mr. Peterson, that presentation was outstanding. Have you had any requests from local schools to give presentations on on the great success once this fence is built and how you've been able to help protect our environment for these children?
Yes, and Maven has handled most of that. But yes, there have been many, many requests to come out, not only to to school kids, but also from other interested parties. We've addressed Queen's University and some of the other, you know, secondary education areas where Maven has spoken and 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 continues. The lake associations around the Kingston area have also been interested, especially in the nest protection and how they can do that. And they are also seeing increases in population and some of the similar problems that we've experienced here.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson.
You're welcome. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, we'll move to our fourth delegation of the evening. At this time, we will invite Kaylee Gabriel and Sheila Roway to speak to new motion number one with respect to Bill C six and Act to amend the Criminal Code conversion therapy. There you go. Ms. Gabriel and Ms. Roway, you you have the floor. Again, five minutes, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. My name is Kaylee Gabriel. I was asked to present on what conversion therapy is and the harm that it can do to individuals. For some context, I'm queer. I have a master's of social work, and I'm a psychotherapist registered at the Ontario College of Social Workers and Social Service Workers. I currently work as a therapist with the Counseling and Treatment Team at Addictions and Mental Health Services for Kingston, Rottenac, Lennox and Addington. AMHS KFLA is committed to our mission and values, contributing to the wellness, acceptance and sense of belonging for everyone in our community and providing responsive, high-quality, community-based addiction and mental health services that empower the people we serve to be well and to achieve their full potential. Our agency acknowledges that we are not experts in the field of supporting people after conversion therapy, but we do want to support the healing process for LGBTQ plus people in our community. Our organization supports support, sorry, supports education and knowledge to make our services accessible for anybody who wants support. Currently, there is youth programming and our counseling and treatment team available to support anyone who's experienced conversion therapy, and we are committed to connecting people to the right service provider if we don't provide the services ourselves. Onto conversion therapy. Conversion therapy is aimed at changing an individual's sexual orientation or gender identity. Conversion therapy is not supported by the medical or therapeutic community, and a majority of leading health organizations have denounced any efforts to change sexual orientation and noted that any attempts to do so could result in serious health risks. We recognize that people who have experienced conversion therapy have unique experiences, unique stressors, and have experienced an insidious form of family and or social rejection. We know that conversion therapy usually begins in youth and has lifelong effects. We recognize that conversion therapy can lead to suicidality, addiction, anxiety, depression, self-hatred, compromised mental health, PTSD, sexual dysfunction and relationship issues. Travis Saway at Simon Fraser University and the B C Centre for Disease Control said, "It's the response to being told that your identity is not valid, that you are not wanted, that you won't be successful. If we hear those messages, we internalize them and we start to feel a sense of shame, and that leads to feelings of suicide." Our agency, AMHS KFLA, provides trauma and LGBTQI A two S plus informed services that, one, respect all components of a person's identity, including gender, sexuality and spirituality. Two, includes grief work and recognition that the losses caused by conversion therapy, such as a loss of sense of self, the loss of family and the loss of social connection, recognizes that internalized homophobia and isolation can be outcomes of conversion therapy, recognizes that interpersonal relationships are healing, and recognizes that the community is an integral part of healing. Psychiatrist Judith Herman wrote that for individuals to heal from trauma, our community must communities must work, must concurrently acknowledge the harm inflicted upon the individual and take action in response to this inflicted harm. This means we need to have two responses, the first being the record, being recognition, such as Bill C six, and the second being restitution, which is creating support in our community and a sense of belonging. These responses rebuild the survivor's sense of order and justice. Hopefully, the city of Kingston will be able to carry out both responses by denouncing conversion therapy and by creating a support system with community partners who assist those who have been affected. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you on this important matter.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counsel Hill.
Thank you. In the lead up to this, and thank you for your presentation, by the way. But in the lead up to this, the sort of number one kind of concern that was expressed, to me at least, was that this has the has the effect of impacting on people who are too young to maybe make that decision, or that folks felt that people were too young to be making a decision about about some of these, about their their gender identity, particularly when it comes to 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 changing their gender identity. So can you comment at all about that? Because that seems to bog people down in my mind a little bit.
I actually think that's talking about two separate issues in a way. There's conversion therapy to, which is an attempt to change your sexuality, so whatever gender you prefer to have sexual relationships or intimate relationships with versus your gender identity, which is how you feel as a person in terms of female, male, non-binary. In terms of age, there's studies that show that some kids know as soon as age four, but really, the experts in this field would be our transgender clinic through KCHC, who are a great community sport and one of definitely a partner that we work with.
Good. Thank you.
Hey, are there any other questions? Counsel Dory.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your presentation, Kaylee. I've also read that conversion therapy can lead to homelessness. Can you explain how that kind of could lead to somebody being homeless?
Sure. I think it's a sense of disenfranchisement. If you're being told by your family and your community, like your church community or the community attempting conversion therapy, it's an indication that you're not worthwhile as a person and that maybe you shouldn't be invested in as a person, which of course can lead to dropping out of school, not continuing with post-secondary education, and then having just general life difficulties and socioeconomic difficulties that would lead to homelessness.
Okay. Counsel Munt.
Thank you. And thanks very much for the presentation. I guess just to sort, two questions to pick up on Counsel Dory's point regarding homelessness. So of course, this is something that we have have heard a little bit about more recently during the pandemic when we're being asked to stay at home. And of course, today, it's even it's even a more strenuous move in that direction. And and so folks who are experiencing difficulty at home due to conflicts over gender identity, et cetera, is it, are there, the first part of the question would be, the supports that currently exist or the supports that we're sort of pushing or pursuing with this motion, do you have any insight into that? Are there other things that we can be doing? Or even if you would just like to speak to some of the work that is happening with the agencies, that'd be great.
I can speak to our model, which is that our counseling and treatment team and a majority of our services have shifted to phone or Skype or Microsoft Teams work, so trying to make services as available as possible. I do know that we have had services going out to the the hub and also like getting out on the street to talk to people. So we are doing our best to be as accessible as possible.
Great. Thank you. And then the other question was just really more like generally about the the kinds of supports in the future that we're asking, we're asking for more information to come back to council eventually and and more recommendations based on what what's taking place over the upcoming months. And so is there anything else that you that you think, you know, that that the the supports that we're asking for for the LGBTQ community, do you do you see that as being sufficient through this motion?
I'm just going to let Sheila answer that as a man, program manager at our agency.
Sure. Hi, I'm Sheila Royd. I'm the program manager for Addiction Services and Counseling and Treatment at AMHS KFLA. And I just wanted to expand on one of the other ones that was asked earlier about outreach. So we do have some outreach addiction coordinators, concurrent disorders case managers who do go to the hub and some other local areas to try and do intake and connect with people. And so homelessness is, of course, a very current issue, and we're trying to reach out for that. As far as, sorry, Counsel Holland, what was your specific question around the future?
Just just what the motion is asking for, that we are, we're looking to support and encourage any any operations that are assisting people with in the LGBTQ community.
So I think what we would do is reach out to our community partners, Kingston Community Health Centre and Malp Bay Centre, who work with other aspects within the same vulnerable populations and try and create a systematic approach and maybe change some of our intake processes and make sure we're really looking for people who do need the support, maybe who've experienced or gone through some conversion therapies. So bringing that lens to our intake and our support and and asking our community partners how we can work together to have a systematic approach for that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gabriel and Ms. Roway, for for your delegation. At this point, we will move to our next delegation, number five. And at this point, we will invite Ben Rogers to speak to new motion number one with respect to Bill C six and Act to amend the Criminal Code conversion therapy. Mr. Rogers, welcome. You have the floor. You have five minutes, and then we'll move to questions from there.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Counsel Dory, for putting this, putting forward this motion, and thank you, council, for letting you speak today. I'm here tonight to speak to you all on a motion which moves to write letters to support to Bill C six to ban conversion therapy and create support system in Kingston, as well as to have council denounce. I have a few things that I feel should be tweaked on that on personal note. However, as mayor, I feel you honestly should have been sending those letters last year when you found out. And I say that loosely, what happened to myself and others who have come forward about Third Day Worship Centre? For those of you that don't know, Third Day Worship Centre is a church here in Kingston where I experienced conversion therapy. My apologies. I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Ben Rogers, and I am a conversion therapy survivor. And I survived conversion therapy through the church Third Day Worship Centre in Kingston, Ontario. A church you, Mayor Patterson, were a pastor and an interim dean while I attended at that church. I was nineteen. I was told to fast for three days, no food and no water, before attending the service, after which I was to be at the front of the church, to which I was to be prayed over by the pastor, his wife, the councillor of the church, and I'm not sure who else had laid their hands on me that day. My head was covered. I had hands over my face. There were people yelling in some strange languages that they had calling out demons of lust and homosexuality, forcing me to change who I was, making me have to be something I was not. I don't know about you, but that sounds like torture. And for me, it truly was. Those were my leaders, my spiritual leaders and my mentors. And that's just part of my story and part of what I went through. As it stands, I support this motion in that it is a good step, but it is not enough. I know there are some against this because they disagree with, you know, phrasing terms, maybe the entirety. But you know what? I disagree with all of them. I say this is important, but there are some things that our municipality can fix a ban with a ban that would come at a municipal level. One, the aspect of consent. How can anyone truly consent to changing who they are at their core? And I'll tell you right now, people who consent to conversion therapy are not doing it of their free will. I was coerced to think that the only thing I could do to be right, to be a man, to be a Christian, to be with my family, to keep my church, to keep my church family, to keep my friends, was to let them fix me, to let them, you know, change who I was. You can't change someone at their core. It's nonsense. Number two, I was 19, just too old, for the bill that's coming out to protect me. Mr. Mayor, you can enact a municipal law that could protect all ages. Number three, the aspects of paid and unpaid. The municipal bill mentions this. However, churches don't necessarily ask for money. Third Day didn't ask me for money, not for the conversion. They asked for other forms, but it wasn't money that they wanted. They wanted me. They wanted someone that they could use as a prize. Mayor, you have an opportunity. You have a chance to take a stand. Not only, not only should this motion be passed, I feel you have, if you have truly changed, I believe, you know, maybe people truly can change. I want to believe that. And I want to give you the opportunity to show that you have. If you truly believe in inclusion and care for all of us, I ask you to put forth a motion to create a municipal ban on conversion therapy that makes the changes that can make the federal one stand strong as the vote goes forward on Bill C6. If you want to support us in this bill, please make a municipal ban. Do the right thing.
Thank you.
Doing this will-
Just to know, you've got 30 seconds left. Just wanted to let you know. Please continue.
Doing this will protect many people. It will help people that have been lost, like I was. Do the right thing, protect us. You have a chance to be on the right side of history right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay. Yeah, Deputy Mayor Ostroff, go ahead.
Thank you, Ben, for your presentation and the courage to speak. And I know all of council hears you, and you did very well. Thank you. The question I have is related to my struggle with Bill C6 in its inadequacy, I guess. So, and as I'll raise again later, in its effect on children. So there, I mean, it's, though I will undo applaud the motion and the secondary, and I just wonder how we can speak to improving the bill. Because if we're just supporting it, I'm afraid that the government will get the message that it's enough. And I'm just wondering how we can do, have a message where I feel that it stops the conversation. I'm thinking mostly of children, and maybe you can address that. You were 19, and when the unthinkable happened, but I'm thinking about, yes, it is, as we heard earlier, there is a mix-up between, not mix-up, but you know, get confused sometimes with transgender and orientation, but they're kind of together in the conversation of the confusion that can be out there for children. So that's something I think is worth addressing, and that's why I struggle, because I believe that's really important, to have a conversation for children. And this, I'm afraid, Bill C6 limits that too much, and then it doesn't do enough for, you know, 19 and over. So there's inadequacies there. What would you say to that?
I would agree with you. There are inadequacies. As I mentioned, that is where the municipal level can actually do work. That is where the municipal action can come in, and where you guys can actually do something. Where the federal bill is presenting five very specific laws, very specific things. The municipal level has the ability to create something that will add that extra inclusion. That would give the opportunity for you as council, you, Mr. Mayor, to work with people like myself, people like No Conversion Canada, to figure out what's missing, and what could actually benefit all of us. Listening to the people like me that have actually been through this makes the biggest difference. And now, I can't speak 100% on the trans side of things, because I am not trans, so I don't want to speak on that personally, because I don't feel I am educated or well enough topic on that. So I don't want to speak on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, not seeing any. And thank you for coming and for sharing. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so with that, we will move to our sixth and final delegation this evening. They will now invite Ashley Perna to speak to new motion number one, with respect to Bill C6, an act to amend the Criminal Code conversion therapy. Ms. Perna, you have the floor, you have five minutes, and then we will open up for questions from council.
Thank you. Is my volume okay? Excellent. Thank you so much, and thank you for having me speak. I just wanted to start out by giving you a little bit of background on who I am, and why I am so passionate about this topic. I'm a longtime Kingston resident, a law clerk, a single mom, and a queer woman, which is to say that I'm attracted to individuals of all genders. When I first moved to Kingston, I was 19. I had been on my own since I was 16. I had no friends, no contact with my family, basically no support system of any kind. I was exceptionally vulnerable for this type of so-called therapy. I hated who I was, and without any other support system, I don't think I would have been able to just leave. Having been in an abusive relationship, I know how hard it is to leave any kind of negative situation, even when it's bad for you, when you have nowhere else to turn. I have no doubts that living through this kind of emotional and religious abuse at the age of 19 would have driven me to suicide. I applaud those who lived through it. I do think that this motion, as written, is an excellent first step, and I applaud all those individuals involved with its creation. I also think, though, that there is a lot more we can do to discourage individuals and organizations from subjecting others to conversion therapy. As drafted, this motion acknowledges that conversion therapy is dangerous, harmful, and unethical. It acknowledges that it's happening in Kingston. It acknowledges that everyone should be protected, but it says not yet, and not here. We were, I'm sure, appalled by the series of articles published by Global and Vice, which set out in horrifying detail what individuals subjected to conversion therapy injured. And I'm sure we are all very moved by what Ben just told us all. However, this motion relies on existing provincial legislation to offer any kind of protection to adults. This means that while we are all horrified at what we heard and read, no steps will be taken to stop it in Kingston. Most of the individuals who spoke up were over 18 at the time they went through this so-called therapy. Experts, such as Dr. Wells, who is quoted extensively in those global articles, say, experts agree that conversion therapy often targets vulnerable youth aged 18 to 25. Those individuals will continue to be targets and victims if this motion were to pass as is. I do realize that there is pending federal legislation, which would, if passed, offer protections to all regardless of age. And of course, criminalizing conversion therapy is ideal. However, we simply don't know when or if that bill will become law. While it did pass a second reading in December, many MPs didn't show up for the vote. Several others only voted for it in hopes it would go through significant revisions later. One MP was even quoted as saying the bill passed but grudgingly. Safe to say, we don't know when those protections will be extended to all adults in Ontario, if ever. And we can't just sit back and wait for the government to step in. Do we really want to say we acknowledge that you're all worthy of protection, but just not yet? Without an amendment directing staff to investigate, other ways we can disincentivize organizations and individuals from offering those harmful and dangerous practices to everyone in Kingston. The atrocities that we are all so horrified to hear about will be allowed to continue, will be allowed to continue to flourish and thrive in our city. Without something with more teeth, council is basically silently approving of those tactics, sitting back and waiting for someone else to do something first. Other cities, like Calgary, Scroose Grove, and Vancouver, saw flaws in their provinces' approach to conversion therapy and did something about it, even though it was difficult, and even if those bylaws are hard to enforce. As they say, just because something is hard doesn't mean it's not worth doing. And there are steps that we can take right now to discourage individuals and organizations from offering conversion therapy to everyone in Kingston. These steps could include things like the imposition of fines, changing zoning bylaws, refusing to offer business licenses, and prohibiting those organizations from receiving city funds or other incentives. It is true that no other municipality in Ontario has similar prohibitions, but to be perfectly frank, when it comes to social change, someone has to have the conviction to go first. Why not Kingston? We have a chance to be real leaders in the province, the first to say conversion therapy is wrong, period. So while I encourage you all to support this motion as a fantastic start, I also encourage you to consider the fact that there is more we can do, and to add an amendment directing staff to figure out how we as a city can take a stronger and much more inclusive stance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counsel Carlyle.
Thank you, Ms. Perna, for your presentation. You mentioned the city of Calgary, and I believe a municipality in British Columbia, who has altered some of their bylaws. And then, right after that, you had given some examples about changing zoning bylaws, revoking business licenses. Were those drawn from those municipalities?
Yes.
Okay.
I did extensive research on what other municipalities had done before I prepared my email that I sent you all on Sunday. I can send you all links to the bylaws as drafted for other cities. I can't recall offhand where I got which suggestion from which city from. I just decided to take all of the good ones and put them in one suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I saw a couple of other hands. Yes, next is Deputy Mayor Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, Ashley, for your presentation. I just want to clarify again, you mentioned, so Bill C6 doesn't, doesn't go far enough in the, in the age limitation, but is there an amendment that goes beyond?
No, Bill C6 includes adults.
Oh, it does.
I'm saying that this motion as drafted makes us rely on provincial legislation, which does not include adults.
Provincial does not, but the Bill C6 that's coming.
As it stands now, does, but we don't know if that will stay or go.
Okay. I needed clarity on that. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Perna. And with that, we are at the, our delegations, and so we will continue on with our agenda. So we have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Yes, Counsel Chappell.
Making your worship, I'm submitting petitions from residents of Walnut Grove in my district. Walnut Grove is a quiet, outliving community consisting of 135 dwellings, where respectful neighbors care for each other. This petition has 203 signatures and represents 98% of the community who expressed deep concern and opposition to the recent official plan amendment application sought by Patrick Development for a four-to-five-story high-density apartment dwelling known as 2274 Princess Street. The borough's development of 170 units is expected to squeeze in on a 1.8 hectare woodlot that sits a mere 30 feet south of the residential addresses from 117 to 139 Elsley Avenue. This proposal is deemed by area residents as incompatible, and have, and they have formed a vocal opposition group called RIDE, Residents Against Incompatible Development. They ask that residents concerned with incompatible development in Kingston register for the public meeting on this proposal scheduled for the planning committee this Thursday, January 14.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Are there any other petitions? Counsel Neil?
Not a petition, just to request that that petition be shared with our planning committee as correspondence received.
Thank you. Yes, that's noted. Are there any other petitions? Seeing none, then we will continue. We have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions. So we will move on to reports. First up, we have report number 13 from the CAO.
By Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number 13 from the Chief Administrator Officer Consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so we have three clauses. Would anyone like any of those clauses separated? Okay, seeing, seeing none, we will vote on them then as a whole. So clause one, renewal of service-level agreement between the City of Kingston and the Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries, and Historic Sites. Number two, award of contract design consulting services for breakwall promenade at Flora McDonald Confederation Basin. And then three, Counsel Stroud, did you want to speak to one of those? Okay, so I just need you to tell me which one you wanted to separate. So you did want one of these clauses separated?
Yes, thanks for your question. Item two, I wanted to speak to.
Okay, so we're going to set aside number two. So we will first do a vote on number one and number three. So number one that I've read, number three, single-source N-Harris Computer Core Maintenance Support for City View Application. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. So now we will circle back to number two, award of contract design consulting services for breakwall promenade at Flora McDonald Confederation Basin. Counsel Shroud, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. I'm aware that the vote is surrounding the RFP process, and the, we have to endorse the, the one chosen by the RFP-weighted evaluation, and that's, that's the purpose of the vote. But the, in the report, a couple of questions were generated by my, from constituents, and I just wanted to ask. So it says that this is the sort of high-level description of the project is a new accessible walkway with lookout seating, lighting, and swimming opportunities. So could staff speak to what the, the successful bidder will be doing regarding swimming opportunities? Like, what kind of swimming opportunities?
Thank you, and through you, your worship, and Counselor Stroud, that's yet to be determined. Certainly, we know that swimming takes place on both the inner and the outer of the breakwall, but we would go through that public exercise to evaluate what would make the most sense in this area. It's not our recommendation to certainly promote full swimming access on the outer, because it can be very rough at that location, but we would certainly include entry and exit points if someone did happen to get in the water. They're certainly getting in the water now, so we would take that into consideration. But at this point, we would anticipate the promotion of some swimming opportunities on the inner part of the harbor, but we also need to take into consideration the marine operations and potential conflicts with boating and other types of watercraft. But that's yet to be determined exactly what the swimming opportunities look like, but it's something that we've seen some success in other areas along the waterfront as we do some renovation projects.
Thank you. So I think I know what you're saying, and I agree with the, the inner wall being much safer for swimming. I mean, I'm, I think you're talking about the kind of thing that happened at Breakwater Park with the, not the pier, but the, the other work on the shoreline that made it much safer for, for getting in the water, sort of informally on the, on the water's edge with the flat rocks and the landscaping, the impressive landscaping that was done at Breakwater Park. I guess that's an entry point, a safe entry point on the inner wall would make a lot of sense, because as, as you say, it's happening anyways. I live near there. I see people out on that breakwater all the time, so like the sooner this can be made safe, the better it will be for everyone. My second question is, it's probably nothing, but in the little artistic rendering, the little hand-drawn thing on the, on the, in the report, it has a bunch of docks, right, sort of, it looks like the docks are coming off of Battery Park. Is there a Confederation Basin redesign also as part of this project?
Through your worship, the- Through, through your worship, the expansion in the marine operations is not part of this, the scope of this work. We would certainly work with our partners in recreation and leisure to review if there's any ductwork or any servicing access points that would be required to accommodate a future marine expansion. As part of the original Block D development, there was some upsizing of services, sewer water, gas, hydro, in order to potentially accommodate a future marine expansion. But that's not something that I'm aware of is advancing at this time, but I'd need to defer that to our partners in recreation to comment further on that.
Okay, so that's not, this RFP has nothing to do with that, but it is theoretically possible because there is infrastructure, basic infrastructure stems coming down through Block D could, could be utilized in the future, but that's not part of this. Okay, that's, that's good to know because that's also a subject of conversation in my district. But that sort of unused part of the, of the protected water beyond where the docks go right now. So, so thank you for, for clarifying that, Mr. Follum. I have, I will support the recommendation to, to go with the one chosen by the weighted RFP system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. It's noted in the report that staff negotiated a lower price, which normally is, dude, kudos. I just wanted to know if that means that the highlights and other features involved in the description of the work will be the same?
Through your worship, the, the deliverables as part of the, the key objectives will still be achieved through this process and the reductions that staff have been able to achieve in our conversations with the consultant.
Great, thank you. So as part of the waterfront trail general plan and proposal, I'm more than willing to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands or comments, we will call the vote on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to report number 14 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that report number 14 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
First clause is municipal accommodation tax fund yearly update and renewal of municipal accommodation tax agreement. We will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Then number two, 2021 Municipal Borrowing Bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number 15 from Planning Committee.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Kylie, that report number 15 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so we have four clauses in report number 15 from Planning Committee. Would anyone like any of those clauses separated? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. So clause one is approval of zoning bylaw amendment 27 Gardner Street. Clause two, approval of zoning bylaw amendment 620 and 630 Graceland Avenue. Clause three, approval of zoning bylaw amendment 771, 785, and 795 to 799 Division Street. Clause four, approval final plan of condominium 501 and 513 Frontenac Street. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, report number 16.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Doherty, that report number 16 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are a number of approvals in report number 16. Would anyone like any of them separated? Seeing none, then we will vote on the report as a whole. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number 17 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report 17 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there are four clauses in report number 17. Would anyone like any of them separated? Counselor Doherty?
Could we please separate clause?
Clause two.
Kingston Coalition.
Okay. Any, any other separations? Okay, so first we will call the vote on everything except for clause two. So clause one, 2019 Household Travel Survey Results. Clause three, Turtle Crossing Migration Strategy, Princess Street at Collins Creek. Clause four, Urban Forest Management Status Report. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Point of order, Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. I think, didn't you have it right by saying mitigation strategy? Isn't that a typo, migration?
I'm not sure that's a point of order, but, but I'll.
We don't want to, we don't want to have voted on some, on a migration strategy for doing a mitigation strategy.
So it is true that the, in the delegations, it says mitigation strategy. So I'm going to guess that mitigation is the right word. Right. So just so people know, it is actually written on the text. Thank you for, for catching that, Counselor Stroud.
Yeah, and you, you actually subliminally already knew it was a mitigation strategy. That's what you.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. So it wasn't, wasn't just me then. Okay. So, did we, did we call the vote on that? Yeah, we did? Okay, thank you. I honestly don't remember. Okay. So circling back into, to clause number two, transmital of report from Kingston Coalition for Active Transportation on the Quiet Streets Initiative. Counselor Doherty?
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I just really want to spend a moment and thank the Kingston Coalition for active transportation and all of the volunteers that worked with them for the Quiet Street project. Our, our staff actually learned a lot from them. They, they studied the movement of people and how Quiet, the Quiet Street project helped people be able to walk from, from different neighborhoods to downtown. So I think, big thank you to all of the people who worked for that project and the money and the time that went into this, this effort because all of Kingston and all of our transportation systems, well, not systems, but our department will benefit from that. So thank you very much to everybody involved.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have nothing from Committee of the Whole. We have no information reports. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we do have one motion, that the resignation of Greg and Anne from the Taxi Commission be received with regret. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Chappell. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on then to new motions. We have one new motion this evening. Moved by Counselor Doherty, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas conversion therapy, also known as reparative therapy, reintegrative therapy, or sexual orientation and gender identity change efforts, is any form of treatment including individual talk therapy, behavioral or aversion therapy, group therapy treatment, spiritual prayer, exorcism, and/or medical or drug-induced treatments which attempt to actively change someone's sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Whereas conversion therapy has been widely denounced as a harmful and unethical practice by major medical and human rights organizations, including the Canadian Psychological Association, Canadian Psychiatric Association, Canadian Association of Social Workers. And whereas Bill C six, an act to amend the Criminal Code, conversion therapy passed second reading by a margin of 305 to 7, and was presented to the House of Commons on December 11, 2020. Whereas Bill C six proposes five conversion therapy-related offenses, including A, causing a person to undergo conversion therapy against the person's will; B, causing a child to undergo conversion therapy; C, doing anything for the purpose of removing a child from Canada with the intention that the child undergo conversion therapy outside Canada; D, advertising an offer to provide conversion therapy; and E, receiving a financial or other material benefit from the provision of conversion therapy. Whereas any municipal prohibition on or regulation of conversion therapy may face legislative and jurisdictional challenges, and as conversion therapy is often practiced in secret outside of formal, formal business settings, any such municipal prohibition or regulation would be difficult for municipalities to regulate, regulate, and enforce. Whereas it is deemed that the regulation of this practice is better addressed at the federal level where it can be criminalized. Therefore, be resolved that city council formally denounce the practice of conversion therapy as a dangerous and harmful practice that perpetuates myths and stereotypes about sexual orientation and gender identity, and that the mayor be requested by council to send a letter to the Prime Minister of Canada, the Minister of Justice and the Attorney General, Minister of Diversity and Inclusion in Youth, and MP Mark Garrettson to express support for Bill C six, an act to amend the Criminal Code, conversion therapy, and the council direct staff to work with health agencies, including Kingston Community Health Centre, KCHC, and KFLNA Addiction and Mental Health Services, AMHS, to develop a Kingston support system that any member of the LGBTQ2S+ community can access and present this to council no later than September 30, 2021, Q3. Counselor Doherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the delegations for your presentation earlier. We learned so much from you, and a special thank you to Ben and Ashley for your courage to share some of your own experiences. I'm sure it wasn't easy. I'm going to start by stating what this motion is not about. This motion is not about the Third Day Worship Centre. Reports of actions at the Worship Centre brought this to the forefront in our community. It's not about the centre, and it is not about the promotion or encouragement of medical treatment related to sexual orientation or gender identity transition, like some people may want you to believe. It is about acceptance and support. Bill C six is about respecting and accepting an individual's right to determine their own gender and sexual orientation. Acceptance and belonging in society is one of the greatest needs. We need it almost as much as food and shelter. It's important to understand that conversion therapy and cultural attitudes that are not supportive of other genders or sexual orientations do not make LGBTQ2 individuals feel safe nor accepted. It's this attitude, and it's this practice of conversion therapy that pushes individuals into a closet from which they struggle to escape. That's why we have the term "come out." Come out of the closet that society has forced you into. And conversion creates a very dark, threatening closet that leads to negative impacts that we heard about tonight, such as loneliness, illicit drug use, homelessness, and suicide attempts. In fact, LGBTQ2 youth are two or three times more likely to attempt suicide. So to Counselor Osterhoff's questions earlier about what about our children, this motion and Bill C six are, is about protecting our children. Conversion therapy is not therapy, and it should not be called therapy. It should be called what it is, and that's abuse. Therapy is a treatment that's intended to heal. Conversion therapy causes deep psychological scars. It victimizes individuals for no other reason but their gender or sexual orientation. As the motion states, conversion therapy is based on myths and stereotypes that major health organizations in Canada and around the world denounce as harmful and dangerous. This is why our federal government is in the process of adding it to the Criminal Code. And anyone who attempts to fight this should be ashamed of themselves. As I see it, we have two options tonight. We support the motion as it is, or we amend it to include a municipal ban. Not doing anything is not an option, especially for council that prides itself in leading a caring, understanding, inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. So as many of you know, I circulated an amendment for this, but first, just to talk about this motion. I think it's a brilliant first step. This is something that has to be done. There's a lot of amendments being done as a result of it not being, not being carried through to its fullest extent.
Counselor McLaren, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask you to pause for a minute. I think your, your audio is very low and you're cutting out in a little, a little bit. I'm just wondering if there's a way that you can increase your volume. What's your time?
Excellent. I'll move closer. Is that better?
That's, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you. So I want you to say that I support this motion wholeheartedly. I think this is exactly what's important and needed at this time. But as a result of some conversations I've had with some people, I suspect that at federal level, this law is only on the criminal aspect. They are not looking at other aspects of it, and that's part of the reason we have more than just criminal law in this country. And we have three levels of government here, with different specializations, with different jurisdictions. And I think it's best, as it said in one of the articles we read, that all levels of government should make synchronous laws or serendipitous laws to support things that are good or prevent things that are bad. So in addition to the criminal law, we do have laws in Ontario. The laws in Ontario are not entirely the best because of course they only go up to age 18. People over 18 are not covered under those laws. We were asked by some of the delegations that we should actually go further than just endorsing the criminalization of this. We should put a ban at municipal level. And to that end, I think it's very important that we do that. So I would like to move an amendment to try and do that. If I can put it up there, please.
Okay, so Counselor McLaren, I'll just pause for a moment. I'll read the motion to amend, and then I'll give it to you. So we have a motion to amend, new motion number one, moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Doherty, that new motion one be amended by adding the following paragraph. Just have to remove this so I can see it. The council direct staff to draft the necessary bylaws to prohibit the practice of conversion therapy across all age groups, including a fine for those offering conversion therapy services within Kingston, and return them to council no later than Q3 2021. Okay, so now, Counselor McLaren, I will start a new clock for you, and you can, you can speak to the amendment.
Thank you. So as mentioned, we have certain jurisdictions in our, at our level that government, provincial government don't. One of those is zoning bylaws. That's entirely our jurisdiction. Another one is business licensing and permitting. And another one that's entirely in our jurisdiction is how we spend municipal dollars. To that end, I think that those three aspects of our jurisdiction can benefit from bylaws to prevent spending therapy. I also noticed that we received several objections from, from staff as to why we can't do this. So I'd like to address some of those now. And so this is a question to staff. Does, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but just to be clear, does the city have jurisdiction over some or all zoning, business permits, and licensing, and the regulation of city funds?
See your hurdle?
Thank you, and through, Mr. Mayor. So I, I will start by answering, and, and my colleagues may want to jump in. So first of all, I do want to say that from a staff perspective, we, we were not opposed to any amendment. We were only trying to provide counsel with, with some advice in terms of what had been done in other municipalities in Ontario. So I want to make sure that's clear. In terms of your question, Counselor McLaren, yes, we do control these elements to a certain extent. If you're referring, for example, to the, the planning aspect, there are a number of, of rules and regulations that are under the Planning Act that we would not have control over. So it all depends on which aspect that you're referring to as far as planning is concerned.
So I suspect that you guys are bright enough to figure out which ones can be to our benefit here. One of the, one of the objections was mentioned that it could be ultra-virus, and that would be because we would be stepping on federal jurisdiction. Is there any word or phrase in my amendment that would necessarily be construed as impinging on criminal law or any other federal jurisdiction?
Mr. Clough?
Hello. I'm unable to see the text of your amendment at the moment, but my recollection is. but my recollection is that it talks of prohibitions. One of the things I would perhaps recommend be considered is that the staff be asked to report back on best use of municipal powers to supplement and complement the federal and provincial powers. So we do have instances right now where there are federal laws which are criminal and we have provincial regulatory laws and we have a complimentary municipal aspect. One of those is firearms. We have a discharging firearms bylaw that complements the Criminal Code. So the prohibition of the practice is driving us straight to one answer. And it would be helpful if we could provide options, as you were indicating, to the range of tools available in the municipal toolkit that we could use collectively to assist in this.
Yes, so I'm hoping you will do that, yes. It could prove very difficult to investigate and enforce the ban was another objection that was meant. May I ask, what does the city do when a non-permitted use on a property is discovered? And can that be also applied in the event that we were to general bylaw saying that conversion therapy should not be a use in any zoning area?
Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, your worship. So typically when we see uses that are operating that are not in compliance with those that are permitted by the zoning bylaw, those are regulatory infractions that we are able to do enforcement on, but it would depend on the nature of the use and how the bylaw defines the activity that's allowed in the particular zone.
Thank you. So essentially it's possible. Secondly, with regards to non-permitted activity carried out by any business, may I ask the same question? What have, can we investigate that and can we enforce that? And how would it happen?
Thank you. And through you. So as part of, if it's a form of business that is required to obtain a license in the city, one of the requirements is that that business is in compliance with all applicable law. So that would be in consideration of any other types of bylaws in the city, which would also include zoning. And that would be a precondition or a precursor to being able to obtain a, a business license through the city.
Excellent. Thank you. And currently, may I ask, if say a, a known hate speech organization were to apply for funds and otherwise be successful, except for the fact that it's a repugnant organization, would they still be able to get the funds? In other words, do we have any mechanism by which we can stop an organization applying for grants or funding of any kind? That is, goes against the human rights of the city or they are state of province or the country or some other requirement criteria?
See you, hurdle.
Thank you. And through Mr. Mayor. So the city has limited funding mechanism. Though they're typically through cultural services and recreation. And we do have some language in there that would preclude the city from essentially allocating funds to such an organization. It could apply, but that doesn't mean they would be recommended for funding.
Wonderful. And does conversion therapy include those right now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I wouldn't have the details in front of me, councillor McLaren, but I, I think the language would be a little bit broader than that. It would, it would get to some of the broader discrimination issues, but we would definitely be including that as part of the organizations or the type of activities that we would not recommend for funding.
Wonderful. I'm glad to see that it's possible. And finally, there was a possibility, it was mentioned that there might be a risk of a charter challenge or something to that effect. May I ask legal staff, do you feel that you are competent and knowledgeable enough to write bylaws and regulations such that we can ban conversion therapy while minimizing the possibility of a charter challenge?
So councillor McLaren, I understand what you're asking, but I think that the way you asked it is problematic. I asked if they're competent enough. I think we just want to be careful with our code of conduct not to cross the line there. So I think it would be better to phrase it in a more neutral way.
Certainly. I have confidence in your abilities to do this. Is my confidence well placed?
Councillor, I share your confidence in our capabilities.
Wonderful.
We often have to vet draft bylaws for charter compliance. So that is something we've managed and we've actually had to change course in a few instances over my years with the city to make sure the path that we take is the one with the best charter compliance.
Thank you. So it sounds to me like most of these objections have been addressed and it sounds to me like staff are quite capable, competent and able to apply the broadest levels of ban on conversion therapy on our jurisdictions. I hope you all think.
Thank you. So just, just to be clear, right now we are speaking on the motion to amend. So I'm just going to ask that people right now speak only to the amendment. So that is whether or not to introduce the municipal ban versus the original motion. And then you'll have a chance to speak to the original motion once we get back to it. So next on my list is councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And I, I was really pleased to see the original motion that councillor Doherty brought forward. But I think as we heard from the delegations that presented tonight, what we're missing is, is, is that next step. And I think we have an opportunity that, that as councillor McLaren is really well defined in his amendment to, to take that next step towards not just saying that this is something that we abhor and that we will not tolerate in the community, but also something that we're going to legislate on to the degree that we're capable of. So I, I endorse both councillor Doherty's motion, but I, I certainly think that this is a welcome addition to it and I, and I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Neil.
Thank you. And I too support this amendment. I think it makes a lot of sense. And I think it addresses both Ben and Ashley's comments in the delegation. I just want to make a quick comment about the whole idea of ultra virus. I think sometimes, and yes, we're a creature of the province and provincial legislation normally or can trump municipal legislation. But, and often we look for best practices in Ontario only. And in fact, there are best practices outside of Ontario that we can definitely look towards. And I want to thank Ashley for sharing those with us. Back in the nineties, we were, I believe, the first municipality to go beyond the provincial restrictions for pesticides and hermesides. And we did it because the delegation of powers to municipalities includes for reasons of health and safety. And this clearly is a case of health and safety if this is going on in our community. And for that reason, I think I would be proud to say we are the first municipality in Ontario to outlaw this practice. And I know that Alan and his staff work really, really hard in the city solicitor's office, but this is something that I'm quite willing to add to the workload of staff because I think it's the right, right action to take. And I want to thank councillor McLaren and councillor Doherty and councillor Hill for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, I have a question that I've corresponded briefly with staff on. And it came up in Ms. Perna's delegation. And I think it's important to both the amendment and the original motion. I'm wondering about the definition of conversion therapy because I think Ms. Perna was right on the money when she said that given the current legislations state in the House of Commons, it could be drastically amended in the next number of months. And I'm wondering if this amendment's definition of conversion therapy will change based on the, the federal bill. If Bill C six changes the definition of conversion therapy, which I would add it did from its first introduction in the fall. And then when it came back as Bill C six, definition changed. So if that definition changed, would the municipality definitions change? Maybe that's a legal question or maybe to the mover of the amendment.
Mr. MacLeod.
There we are. So an interesting aspect of the multi-level, multi-jurisdictional aspect of this is that there is also provincial legislation, the Regulation of Health Professions Act, that in 2015 brought in language how therapists would manage and what they were prohibited from doing and managing the treatment of people who had issues related to sexual orientation. So there's another definition in that statute. So what we would be able to look at as part of the options and part of the best practices we would recommend is what is the definition that best suits the municipal need and how we are proceeding to use all the tools available to us to achieve the end?
All right. So it wouldn't just be based on Bill C six. This would be a more holistic approach.
We would review holistically the current legislation at both levels and recommend language that without speculating too far, could have elements of each or could be drawn from somewhere else. A definition in itself is not usually something that is as tightly regulated, for example, as the power to impose penalties and sanctions.
Fair enough. I'm happy to support the amendment. Thank you.
You, councillor Strumpf.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you to the mover and seconder of the amendment. But right is right and wrong is wrong and conversion therapy is wrong. I think we all agree. We've heard stories of a couple of survivors. And, and, and really that should be our priority is what can we do that will minimize future harm to any survivors or any future victims of this abuse? And so that's the, I believe, what the mover had in mind with this amendment. And that's what we all want. But before we vote on it, I think we, we need to be clear on the legal aspects. And specifically, are we setting ourselves up with a, on a collision course with the Criminal Code or the, the changes to the Criminal Code which are coming from the bill? So I'm going to go back to Mr. MacLeod. Is including the word prohibit in the motion in the actionable be it resolved clause, is that, is that problematic? Could it, could it set up a legal problem vis a vis the Criminal Code changes coming from Bill C six?
Mr. MacLeod.
Yeah, sorry. I understand that the direct, the amendment is directing staff to do something. So that when we look at the word prohibit, I would draw from that including if full out prohibition were sometime too great a challenge. First of all, we would explain that to you. And we would be also then looking for we, I'm just having to clear my screen. Direct staff to draft the necessary bylaws to prohibit, we would include in that idea or restrict. And we would have come back to you with options and explain that so that you know why something that was a prohibition or a fine is maybe not something that we would be able to enforce as we would wish. But there would could be alternatives to fines and there could be alternatives to prohibition. So this will give us the opportunity to do the proper research for you and come back with options and some confidence that the, the route we're recommending is one that will not just take a stand, but also be effective in administering whatever level of prohibition or restriction we can best recommend to you.
Yes, precisely. It, it needs to be effective and it needs to be enforceable and it needs to be something other than just pretty words, right? And so the, the, I guess, where my follow-up question would be, again to Mr. MacLeod or to the CAO, my follow-up question would be, is it clear from the wording in the amendment that we want all measures mentioned that could help prohibit the practice by any legal municipal means at our disposal? I mean, it doesn't spell it out exactly in that way, but is that understood as CAO from the wording that we're looking for effective measures? Things that we can actually enforce and things that can actually discourage the practice and, and eventually prohibit it completely?
Let's see, hurdle.
Thank you. And through, Mr. Mayor. So I think through the conversation that we've had a chance to have with council tonight, I think it's made it very clear that council wants us to look at every potential tool that we have under our, our municipal oversight to, to come back to council and look at ways that we can implement those. So that is understood. It may not be described in the language of the amendment, but it is understood based on the conversation we've had tonight.
Okay, thank you. So that, that, I just wanted that crystal clear. I think the, everybody knows what the mover meant with the amendment. Everybody that supports going further than what the original motion says and what C six offers, everyone that supports going further is going to support this amendment. But the, but staff has now made it clear that they understand what, what we want. We want something that works, something that is, that is in the municipal realm and something that does offer the comfort to, to those affected beyond what C six might offer. And I, I, I think if that's the case, and I, and I believe after the explanation that it is, then what we've got here is an amendment that actually reduces harm even further than, than the original motion and, and is also compatible with the original motion. So, so it's a win-win and I will be supporting both. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair? I will, Mayor Patterson, and I recognize you. Thank you. So I, I'm going to keep most of my comments to, to the main motion. But what I will say to this amendment is that I'm, I'm certainly very supportive of it. I think when I was originally confronted about how best to respond to this issue, that initially, I think I saw it as a trade-off to say, okay, is it best dealt with at a the federal bill or should we look at a municipal bill? And I think when I was initially thinking of a trade-off, that clearly a federal bill that would be able to comprehensively address it and be able to criminalize it was the best way to go. But I do want to say full thanks and credit to councillor McLaren, to other community members that were able to, to reach out and provide that different perspective that it's really not a matter of one or the other. But there is a way to be able to combine those efforts to be able to, to address the issue as effectively as possible. And so I am just want to be on the record of saying that I'm, I'm certainly happy to support the amendment. Thank you very much. And I return the chair to you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Yes, Deputy Mayor Oster.
Sorry, the buttons. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, for those comments as well. And I, I guess you spoke to the, to the overall motion and to the amendment, didn't you? So I guess I can as well, or should I, can I comment on the, the motion?
No, just the, my comments were just on the amendment, so I'm.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, yeah, I guess it was. I, I thank you to councillor McLaren. I do have questions for later and, but I think you have worded it well and I want to thank Alan MacLeod as well for his confidence and his words. I feel like we're in good hands there that will, will do a good job with that. So I, I like that. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nobody else that wishes to speak to the amendment, councillor McLaren, it is your motion to amend. You have the last word if there's anything else you want to add. Seeing, seeing none, then we will just call the vote then on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. So now we are back to the motion as amended. So councillor. So Council McLaren, you have three minutes remaining on the clock. If there's anything else that you wish to say to the main motion now as amended? Oh, okay. Thank you. So going back to my original speakers list, the next person on my list then is Counselor Neil.
Yes, Counselor McLaren stole some of my thunder that I was going to speak up on on the main motion. I'm I'm really glad for for the amendment. I think it really strengthens this. And it's all well and good to say that there's a criminal code bill that's in the works. But there may be an election that slows that up. And it's, I think, a very good idea that that we address it. And it was excellent work that Counselor Doherty and Counselor Hill put into this. But hearing from the delegations, I'd like to say with all due respect to my colleagues that eleven heads are are better than two when it comes to listening to our constituents and strengthening, being able to strengthen a proposal. So I look forward to this passing hopefully unanimously. And I'm proud that Kingston might be the first municipality in in Ontario to pass such a piece of municipal legislation. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna, I guess I'll start with the the conversation because we have all seen the back and forth about what where we've ended up with the amendment, which is which is great. I think we wanted to get there. And I certainly applaud everybody for their efforts and and everybody who has written and told us that shared with us that they wanted us to be leaders in this area and they wanted us to find a way to have a municipal ban. I think what what I want to say on that is that the I think what I think there's always an opportunity for people to learn more about how governments at various levels function. And I think that's what we saw here. I think it was a really important discussion that we were able to have with people about what's happening at a federal level, what, you know, what, yes, what happened in Calgary or what happened in British Columbia at a time when there were no there was no federal legislation on the table as there is now. And so the the context was different when those municipalities made that decision. And I just want to make that point because I think it was certainly the intention of the mover and seconder to go as far as feasible. I won't speak for them, but within our jurisdictional restrictions. So the, you know, there's nothing lost here. The fact that we put in this effort and we had these conversations and that everyone got to learn a little bit more about what's happened in other places and what is actually possible and how we do have to work with the provincial and federal government on all of these matters, I think, is a is a really positive thing. So we've come to a good outcome. And the, I guess, just in terms of the the ongoing issue. So this this motion, the we are sending a great signal. We are obviously leaders, you know, once again, we've done this on various issues. And and I'm really happy to see that. I think it is very reassuring to people to see us take bold steps. I live with a teenager now and I'll tell you, nothing gets you the side eye faster than saying something that is not in line with the current way of thinking about issues about equity. And this, you know, my my fourteen year old said to me, I cannot believe you are speaking about this, that this is an issue. I can't believe you're having this conversation. This is torture and it happened, you know, how is this happening in this century? And so that's the way the issue is perceived by the next generation. So I really am happy to see that not just on her behalf or the behalf of her friends, but that we are taking a position that is on the edge, you know, and being leaders in order to demonstrate to people who really are affected at this and in that young, vulnerable stage. And to everybody who has been affected in the past that we recognize the the cruelty and the terrible hardship that has been caused by this way of thinking. And so I'm I'm very, very pleased to see that Counselor Doherty is gone and Counselor Hill have gone in the direction of also trying to offer more supports in the community. Having worked with people from various backgrounds in the community, I can I can say there are still so many structural hardships that people and barriers that people have to overcome when it comes to their gender identity. And one thing I would mention, and I would hope we can get to this point without a motion. But, you know, this is what this is the reason for doing things like identifying with pronouns. And for example, I don't know, hopefully, some of you have been in other meetings where you're asked to put your pronouns on the screen and you're asked to to make that visible to people so that individuals don't feel like they're being excluded. They could they feel like they're being represented and they feel and and when you're chairing a meeting or when you're referring to someone, everyone has a better understanding of gender identity. So I really do hope that this is the beginning of us being not just, you know, obviously banning and and being prescriptive about the negative behaviors, but but setting this positive example for the community in the years to come about what we can do to make everyone feel included here in the city. So thank you to the mover and seconder and to everyone who has supported this.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Hill.
Well, I actually just wanted to say how much Counsel Holland's comments resonated with me. I mean, twenty five years ago, this probably would have been a very contentious issue to raise to council. And, you know, today, this is looks like it's going to go through council with with great support and with some real, you know, some real opportunity to put some teeth to it. And I think that's wonderful. And I and I I don't want to take any credit for this because this was all the work of Counsel Doherty. She did a fantastic job in researching this. I just, I think we look forward to the day when this isn't, just as Counsel Holland said, or her daughter said, I guess, that this is not even going to be a topic for discussion because we just willingly and gratefully accept everyone, who they are, for what they are. And they bring their great gifts to our community and and we welcome that. So this is a step, I guess, in our evolution. We're not there yet, but we're maybe moving in the right direction and getting a little bit closer to where we hope we will want to arrive at some point. So I do congratulate everyone for supporting this initiative and especially Counsel Doherty for her work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor Osterov.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, so I want to bring up a couple of the issues, but I want to overall commend the mover and the seconder for this motion and its attempt to encourage a more positive changes in our world. And I I completely, I I will support this now with this conversation and and seeing the fulsomeness of our municipality and and how the kind of city that we want to see. And so I do think that's really important. And perhaps some of my concerns can be dealt with as the Bill C six is going to go through some more vetting and scrutiny. And, you know, I really want to commend so many of the public too, who who spoke very eloquently. And I I think that that's fantastic. The one letter that I was also moved by was, and the concern I have is about conversation. And I may be wrong and I I'm happy to be wrong because I, but I'm concerned about that that the bill will impact the rights of parents to have healthy conversations and with their children. And I think that that's something that I I will do the research after. And perhaps Counsel Doherty has has can give me some confidence in that because I think that that's really important. One of the writers sent in a really great letter concerned about gender fluidity and that the Bill C six doesn't really address that. And so we don't want the bill to create another victim as well, right? That's really important to me. So that's something perhaps that we can address. And I don't know if Counsel Doherty wants to reply. Can can she reply to that, Mayor Patterson?
Yes, you can ask questions of the movers. So Doherty, you can respond to that question.
Sure, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Counsel Osterov, for asking that question. So for your first question, that Bill C six means that parents can't have conversations with their children about gender, that's absolutely not true. And I'll read to you exactly what it says. These new offenses would not criminalize private conversations in which personal views on sexual orientation, sexual feelings or gender identity are expressed, such as where teachers, school counselors, pastoral counselors, faith leaders, doctors, mental health professionals, friends or family members provide affirming support to persons struggling with their sexual orientation, sexual feelings or gender identity. And I know that in in one of the letters we we received, a person had the concern with the word affirming. Affirming means listening and caring to for your child and accepting your child for who they are. That's what affirming means. And then and then we received a letter regarding the case of a thirteen year old and 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 medical procedures and drugs. Our medical system and our laws need to be set up to protect everyone. This bill is separate to that. It is, it is, it is, oh, it's, although that is did happen, it is very separate and it is, I feel like it derails the conversation from where it is. And it's it's very separate. So and it confuses people and I I feel frustrated when people try to spread those that kind of misinformation, even though it happened in this case and using it for this example, it really is misinformation and it's misleading people. So I think you can rest assured that Bill C six is actually about protecting children. And it's not meant to take rights away from parents. But that parents should be thoughtful and listen to their children and and accept their children for who they are in an affirming way. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think that needed to be clarified is also that's that that we as council recognize that that that's important. The conversation to me is very important is the is the freedom as a parent. And so thank you for that. And the other notes that I have made, forgive me. So it's basically mostly with that tonight and recognizing the need to continue the conversation. So I do want to commend again the mover and the seconder and that we can continue to bring hope and healing to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor, I'll ask if you would take the chair, please.
I do, Mayor Patterson, and I recognize you.
Thank you very much. There have been a lot of really good comments from council around the table tonight. And I want to say thank you for all of those those comments. I think what I would like to do is address the elephant in the room, which in this case is me. I know full well that my my personal faith has been in the spotlight over the last number of months. And so I I genuinely appreciate the opportunity to be able to to speak to council and to speak to the community as a whole. First of all, and I think it's important to clarify because there has been some confusion on this, that my wife and my family and I left Third Day Worship Center last fall. We are no longer a part of the church. But I know that there have been some legitimate questions, some perceptions even about what my own beliefs are. And so with the indulgence of council, I'd just like to take a moment to be able to to address that and and hit that head on. First of all, when Counsel Doherty came forward with this motion, I was happy to second it. I want to thank her for for helping to bring this forward. And the reason why I was happy to second it is because conversion therapy is wrong. It's just plain wrong. And I do not support it or condone it in any way, shape or form. When I heard Ben's story, it breaks my heart. It honestly breaks my heart. And I will tell you that while I was not aware of these situations, I'm just deeply saddened to hear about the negative experiences that people had. And I really appreciate the opportunity here at council and as a community to be able to make space for these conversations, to be able to have this kind of dialogue for people to be able to come forward. And as has been said, I'm sure it was very difficult. So I see this motion tonight as a chance for council and also for me to take a stand on something against something that was wrong, but also to make a statement on something that is right. In this case, an inclusive community. Now, I'm going to be very honest that my my thinking and my views and attitudes towards the LGBT community, they have evolved over the years. But I can tell you that as a Christian, I have come to that place where I believe that I'm called to love every person, to ensure that they are valued and respected. That is my heart. And so I want every member of our LGBTQ community to know that I value you. I respect you. But we are all equal. You know, I often say this phrase about how we're all in this together. I mean that. And when you think about what an inclusive community is all about, it's that we can all be included and we can all succeed and we can thrive regardless of our of our sexual orientation or gender identity or our race or religion or ethnicity, that we can all be in this together. As mayor, I am proud to champion that vision. I am proud to lead towards an inclusive community. And as a person, that's my heart. That's what I believe. So Deputy Mayor, I appreciate your indulgence in giving me the chance just to be able to to share where I'm coming from. And I certainly will join with council and certainly would appreciate council's support on this to be able, again, to stand against something that is wrong, also make a statement about something that's right. Thank you very much.
Great words and we appreciate them very much. Thank you. I return the chair to you.
So with that, Counsel Doherty, it is your motion. You have the the final word if there's anything else you'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, there's what what can I add? I really think our conversation tonight was really affirming. I think it was very important for our community to hear our support. And I really want to thank you for amending the motion and supporting it to the extent that you have. I think it was a very rich and important conversation. When we talk about the Kingston community, we mean everybody. And I think in June, when you see the the pedestrian crossing all painted the colors of the rainbow, I think we can with pride know that we have actually earned that privilege. So I really want to thank you because it sounds like this motion will have be supported unanimously. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So with that, then we will call the vote on new motion number one as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, so we have no other motions. Are there any notices of motion tonight? Okay, seeing done, Mr. Clercoss for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Hill, that the minutes of City Council Meeting Number Two dash twenty twenty one held Tuesday, December fifteenth and Wednesday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty be confirmed.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Most.
And that's carried. Okay, we have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk Ross for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that bylaws one through six and 11 be given first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that Clause 11.36 of Bylaw 2010-1 as amended be suspended for the purpose of giving Bylaw Two, Three readings.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Our final bylaw vote of the evening, moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that bylaws two through five and seven through 11 be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counsel Neal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ostroff. All those in favor? Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.